We'll get started in about another minute. The May 11th, 2015 meeting of the City of Danville Planning Commission is now called to order. Welcome everyone to the meeting today. The Planning Commission is an advisory board of the Danville City Council and is comprised of members who serve on a voluntary basis. Today we have six items to consider for which there will be a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against the case may do so at that time. After the public hearing, commission members may have questions for staff or for those who have spoken, and Planning Commission will review the case relative to the city code and make a recommendation to forward to city council. Council will consider these items at their June 16th meeting. Ms. Harrison, if you'll call the roll please.
Mr. Scares?
Here.
Mr. Dotson?
Present.
Mr. Garrison?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Mrs. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Bolton?
Okay, first item on the agenda is a special use permit application, PLSUP 2015-0000119, filed by Steve Del Giannio, requesting a special use permit to allow the operation of indoor commercial recreation establishment in accordance with Article 3K, Section C, Item 5 of the Code of the City of Danville at 616 North Main Street. The applicant is proposing to operate an indoor commercial recreation establishment at the location. We could have a staff report, please.
The subject property, 616 North Main Street, is currently a vacant building that is undergoing renovations to become a restaurant. As a secondary use of the structure, the applicant, Steve Del Giorno, would like to provide indoor entertainment at an additional cost to his patrons. According to the zoning code definitions, providing indoor entertainment at an additional cost is indoor commercial recreation. Within the zoning classification of CBC, Central Business Commercial, indoor commercial recreation is allowed by special use permit in accordance with Article 3K, Section C, Item 5 of the Code of the City of Danville, Virginia 1986, as amended. Twenty-nine notices were sent to surrounding property owners within 300 feet. Six responses were received, five unopposed, one opposed. Staff recommends approval of special use permit application, PLSUP 2015-0000119, to allow indoor commercial recreation in accordance with Article 3K, Section C, Item 5 of the Code of the City of Danville, Virginia 1986, as amended, at 616 North Main Street. Staff recommends approval with the condition that the hours of operation do not exceed Sunday through Thursday, 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., and Friday through Saturday, 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m.
Okay, thank you. I'll open the public hearing now. If someone would like to come and speak on this item. Give us your name for the record, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Jeff Bond. I am representing the owner, also the architect of record for 616 North Main Street. Would like to thank the commission and city staff's time for reviewing this application. As stated, the primary use of the property would be a restaurant. The owner also wishes to have entertainment where they would like to charge an admission or cover. These events will be primarily small musical-type performances and other small performances. Without getting into too many, too much detail on the property, we'll have seating for 75 patrons, as well as kitchen prep space. Other than that, open question, open it for questions.
Any questions from commissioners?
I have a question. When you're charging for entertainment, is it separate from the meal? Or if someone wants to come and eat dinner, do they get to stay and then see the entertainment? Or is this for people coming in separately? Or both?
The way it's been described to me is that if people come to eat dinner and they also want to stay for the performance, that they would also have to pay. That's how it's been described to me.
They would still have to pay, is that what you're saying?
That's what I've been told, correct.
Any other questions? Okay, all right, thank you.
Is it like a concert venue then? I mean, is it set up like a concert venue?
No, it has tables and chairs and a bar, and there's a small stage, approximately 15 by 10 feet. So it's a relatively small stage for small performances. The tables and chairs will remain in place.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Okay, we're going to close the public hearing. With your pleasure.
Okay, I recommend approval of special use permit application, PLSUP 2015-0000119. Really, these are subject to the conditions put forward by staff. I believe.
Second.
Hey, we have a second?
Second.
Have a roll call, please.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Dotson?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Garrison?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is a special use permit application, PLSUP 2015-0000120, filed by Tim Garland, requesting a special use permit to allow a waiver of the minimum lot size in accordance with Article 3, Section C, Item 20 of the Code of the City of Danville. Parcel number ID 77798, the applicant is proposing to subdivide parcel ID 77798 and create a lot that is approximately 18,730 square feet in area where 40,000 square feet is required. If we could have a staff report.
The subject property, parcel ID number 77798, is currently located within the LEDI Light Economic Development District. The applicant is requesting a special use permit to allow a waiver of the minimum lot size requirements. The subject property currently has two vacant structures, and the applicant is seeking to subdivide the lot in order to create two separate parcels with a structure on each one. The new lot created does not meet the minimum lot size requirement, requirements of 40,000 square feet in area, and therefore the applicant is seeking a waiver of, to reduce the minimum lot size to approximately 18,730 square feet in area. Eleven notices were sent to surrounding property owners within 300 feet of the subject property. Five were received, five not opposed. Staff believes that lowering the minimum lot size to approximately 18,730 feet will not have any adverse effects on adjacent properties. Staff recommends approval of special use permit application, PLSUP 2015-0000120, filed by Tim Garland, requesting a special use permit to allow a waiver of minimum lot size requirements.
All right, thank you. I'll open the public hearing for anyone wishing to speak on this item. Can come forth at this time. Yes, ma'am.
How you doing? I'm Dale Wyatt, and I'm here on behalf of Tim Garland for this request, and he's seeking this request for this barn or warehouse to be used for a storage building.
Okay.
And Tim is a batting coach with the Houston Oilers, and he's only here several months out of the year, and he needs a space in which to store equipment.
Okay, very well. Any questions from, headed by commissioners?
When I'm down with this property, what, what building exactly is going to be used for the storage? Are there going to be a new one built on that property? I was having a lot of difficulty.
I believe there's already a building there, and he is going to, I'm assuming, do some renovations to the building, and then he will be using it strictly for storage.
All right, I'm a little bit confused because, all right, when you, there's a long, and y'all might need to help me with this, there's a long building that's kind of across the street, but the part that was marked out is kind of a dilapidated, almost like lean-to structure, and then there was a smaller concrete building. I guess I'm just curious about what, what it is we're talking about here. I had, I had a lot of confusion.
If you go to your packet, you'll see a survey.
I went, I went out there.
Okay, but as a part of the survey, it's the one that's further up the hill on Bradley Road. That's the one that he's keeping.
Is that gray leaning?
Yep.
You gonna renovate it?
I'm assuming he's gonna do some renovations because he will be using it for storage, and I'm sorry I can't, can't be of any, you know, further assistance on this, but.
It's easier to see when the vegetation is off, but yes, that, that building up on top is the one that he's proposing to keep.
He will be clearing the vegetation?
Our understanding is he'll be clearing the vegetation around it, doing some renovations to the building, just to use it for storage of equipment.
And, and just out of my curiosity, you said he was the, the batting coach?
He is a batting coach, one of the batting coaches for the Houston Oilers.
But the Oilers is, I don't think.
Houston Astros, I'm sorry, Astros. Houston Astros, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm getting a little confused up here. The, okay, so, so he's gonna be storing in that facility major league level baseball equipment?
Yes.
With a good lock on it.
Huh?
With a good lock on it.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, all right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Being known, I'll close the public hearing, see if we can get a motion here.
Well, do we get to ask questions?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. Y'all are gonna have to help me with this one. I don't know what our, our limits here, but when I went out there and was looking around, walking around, I mean, it looked really, really rough out there, and so, so are we thinking of the right building?
It's hard for me to tell what building you're thinking of. There's two buildings on the property. There's one closer to the creek, kind of sits down over. It's the one that sits up on top of the hill, probably 100, 150 feet up from the intersection of Richmond Boulevard and Justin Lane. It is a gray-looking building, but most of them are gray to me, so, yeah, it just sits further up the hill. It's not the one that sits down over towards the creek.
Kind of looks like horse stalls.
Sort of, yeah.
My only problem with this, I mean, I don't, it looks like it would be an improvement to that area, so I don't really have a problem with the concept at all. My only problem with this is that, again, we don't get to really kind of see what's gonna be done there, or we don't have any kind of real.
He's only asking to make the lot size less than what is required. He doesn't want to buy the entire piece of property. He doesn't feel he has a need for the entire piece of property, so he's looking to try to subdivide it off. In order to subdivide it, he needs to get the special use permit to allow for a smaller lot size. He's talked to us just about minor improvements to the building, just to make it secure, and, and that's it. We don't know of any other use for the building itself besides storage, as she said, so we don't anticipate any major renovations or anything else to the structure. He's just asking to buy a small piece of property.
Basically, all we're deciding is lot size versus the size of the building, how nice the building is or is not, really is not up to us.
Well, except that it's, it's in somebody's neighborhood and stuff like that, and.
Well, this is pretty industrialized area, I think.
So what's then was the marketability of the lot that's left with the concrete structure?
It's still almost two and a half acres left over, so if someone was looking for a two-and-a-half acre lot that is owned that way, it would be there. There's utilities in the area. There hasn't been a lot of calls to staff asking for development in this area because of its proximity to the, the chemical plant and other things. It will probably have the same marketability it had before. In this case, the gentleman was just looking for a storage, an area to, to buy a piece of property to store stuff. He liked that area. I believe he may have friends or family out in that area, and asked to buy just a small portion of it. In order to do that, that's why he had to come here and ask for the special use permit.
Any other questions? If not, we need a motion. Yes, sir.
I recommend that we approve special use permit application, PLSUP 2015-0000120, subject, excuse me, as submitted by staff.
Okay, have a second?
I'll second.
All right, have a roll call, please.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Garrison?
Yes.
Mrs. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Dotson?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next item, rezoning application, PLRZ 2015-0000122, filed by Mark Johnson with LE&amp;D Professionals PC, on behalf of Oral D Wiseman, requesting to rezone from PSC, Planned Shopping Center Commercial to Highway Retail Commercial, HRC District, parcel ID 5258, excuse me, 52598, on Westover Drive. The applicant is proposing to rezone to construct a retail establishment at this location. If we could have a staff report, please.
A request has been filed by Mark Johnson with LE&amp;D Professionals PC to rezone from PSC, Planned Shopping Center Commercial, to HRC, Highway Retail Commercial District, on parcel ID 52598 along Westover Drive. The applicant is proposing to rezone to construct a retail establishment at this location. The lot being requested is currently vacant and sits adjacent to Danville Toyota, which is also currently zoned PSC. The applicant is proposing to construct a facility approximately 15,480 square feet for the sale of recreational vehicles and accessories. Both the HRC and PSC districts allow for the sale of recreational vehicles but differ on setback regulations. The PSC district has front and side setbacks of 40 feet, and the HRC district has a front setback of 30 feet and a side setback of 20 feet. The subject property is approximately .88 acres, and the applicant is requesting to rezone to the less restrictive HRC district in order to build a larger facility on the property. A preliminary site plan has been submitted and is substantially in compliance with the zoning code for the HRC district. Six notices were sent to surrounding property owners within 300 feet of the subject property. Zero were received. Staff recommends approval of rezoning application, PLRZ 2015-0000122, filed by Mark Johnson with LE&amp;D Professionals PC, to rezone from PSC to HRC on parcel, parcel ID 52598 along Westover Drive. Adjacent properties to the west and the north of the subject properties are zoned HRC, therefore the, the proposed rezone would not be considered spot zoning.
All right, thank you. I'll open the public hearing now for those who want to come and speak on this item.
Good afternoon, y'all. I appreciate your time. Scott's pretty well went over everything, I believe. I'm Mark Johnson with LE&amp;D Professionals. I'm representing Mr. Wiseman today. They're looking to construct a retail, like an ATV-type sales facility there. The, the parcels were three separate residual parcels from the development of Piedmont Place and Danville Toyota. So Mr. Wiseman has gone back since and, and consolidated three parcels into one. He's purchased the parcels they didn't own, and this is a, a chance to use that property, which otherwise has, has not been available to this point. Main reason for the rezoning is the PSC has a 40-foot front setback and a 40-foot side setback, and the HRC will give us 30 feet front and 20 feet sides, which gives them enough room to get the size facility that they're looking for. They actually want a little larger facility, but they can accommodate their business with what we've shown on our, our exhibit. So, are there any questions?
Any questions from commissioners?
I have a question.
Sure.
The entrance off of Westover Drive, is that where the, there is a current curb cut there from one of the old parcels?
No, sir. We, actually, the current curb cut is closer to the intersection. We pushed the entrances far away from the intersection as we could.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant?
So is that, tell me what the reference there is across from Food Line. Is your curb cut gonna be across from that? Because that's a dangerous situation.
The entrance aligns with Food Line, as I recall. When we designed Piedmont Place, that was a city requirement at that time. Is that, am I correct on that, Kenny?
Your proposed, your proposed entrance on the?
No, the Piedmont Place intersection.
Piedmont Place lines up across from Turpin Street as it comes out.
Oh, okay.
The proposed entrance that he has on his site will, it'll be as close to the Food Line as possible. It may be slightly a few feet to what would be the west of the Food Line entrance, but when you'd come out of his site and you're in the lane to the right to make either a turn eastbound onto it, you'll be almost directly across, and the entrance is coming out onto Westover from Food Line. Now, the other street that comes up does line up with Turpin Street, so if you come out onto the, the street that feeds up between the Toyota dealership and everything else, you'll come to that, that four-way intersection.
Just my experience with that, coming out of Food Line is difficult at times, and now you're adding something else across the street is concerned. Might be a traffic issues.
Well, the, the topography out there doesn't allow to connect anywhere, you know, like to the Toyota site or anything else.
It's really the only place you could have an entrance, and to, and to keep it further away from the intersection.
Food Line has multiple places to get out. They have the one on Westover. They could also go to Turpin Street, which puts them further up, gives them a little more distance to make that, that turn in and out. We have much more concern further east as you go towards the, the Goodwill and, and other places, just because of the amount of traffic that comes in and the spacing at the light. At this point, they've usually started to, to spread themselves out enough that it gives the option of coming out. Now, again, I can't control how people drive in and out of the Food Line. I personally, when I use it, go over to Turpin just because it gives myself what I feel is a better view, as you can see better going up the Pino's, kind of that place, as opposed to being that close to folks who are coming out of that little dog place or whatever next door, and, and Goodwill just gives you a little distance, but, so, I, we're doing the best we can with, with his entrance lining up across from this one.
Any other questions for the applicant?
And there's a secondary entrance off Piedmont Place as well?
Yes.
Yes, sir. That's a one-way drive around the building for, that's, that entrance is mainly for tractor-trailer deliveries, to be able to access around the building and, and enter, I mean, exit on to Piedmont Place.
That will also allow people to exit, go down to the light that's there at the Sam's intersection, and then head either east or west on Piedmont Drive. Now, if people choose to go out on Westover, again, I can't control their motions, but it would be an easier for them if they're heading in that same direction, just to make that onto Piedmont Place, go down and catch the light, so that way they can go one way or the other under controlled intersection.
So it wouldn't be easier to psych the building towards Piedmont Place rather than Westover?
The problem then, the lot, if you try to turn the building, you'd have topographical issues because of it dropping so much. Again, it's starting at Westover and sloping down towards Piedmont. If you remember, Toyota dealership's sitting down low and is sitting up high, so rotating the building around would elevate probably two-thirds of the building. At least this way, they can tuck it into the hill towards Westover. Their parking lot also would be a substantial slope. This way, they can kind of terrace the parking lot, have a flatter upper parking lot and lower level with the drive around. You are gonna have a slight incline coming up out of the driveway. I haven't seen his grading plan, so this is what I'm just kind of figuring on my own, and Mark can, can step in and speak if he feels a little differently.
Yeah.
But orienting the building, I don't think, would work much better.
This building would look very much like PMOC on, on Executive Drive, the two-level parking in the back, at, at upper level and parking in the front, at the front. This will mimic that situation, and the slope will be taken out between, you know, the sides of the building, so.
Any others? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Being known, I'll close the public hearing, and for a motion, please.
Recommend approval of rezoning application, PLRZ 2015-0000122, as submitted, I believe.
Right, yeah. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, and a roll call, please.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Dotson?
Yes.
Mr. Garrison?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Next item is special use permit application, PLSUP 2015-0000123, filed by Howard Burnett, requesting a special use permit to allow wholesale sales in accordance with Article 3M, Section C, Item 25 of Code of the City of Danville at 329 Westover Drive. The applicant is proposing to operate a wholesale sales establishment at this location. If we could have a staff report.
If you could do the other case there, the same property?
All right, I'll read this next one, too. Special use permit application, PLSUP 2015-0000124, filed by Howard Burnett, requesting a special use permit to allow a waiver of yard requirements in accordance with Article 3M, Section C, Item 21 of the Code of the City of Danville at 329 Westover Drive. The applicant is proposing to allow a zero-foot side yard setback where 20 feet is required. Staff, please.
The subject property, 329 Westover Drive, is approximately 2.8 acres and zoned HRC, Highway Retail Commercial. The applicant, Howard Burnett, is requesting to operate a wholesale sales establishment in accordance with Article 3M, Section C, Item 25 of the Code of the City of Danville, Virginia 1986, as amended. 329 Westover Drive is currently being occupied by Riverside Equipment Rental. The property owner is looking to subdivide the property and to relocate Riverside Equipment Rental to an existing structure towards the rear of the property. An additional parking lot will be added to accommodate for parking. In order to renovate the existing structure in the rear of the property, the applicant is also requesting a special use permit to waive the yard requirements in accordance with Article 3M, Section C, Item 21 of the Code of the City of Danville, Virginia 1986, as amended, to allow a zero-foot side yard setback where 20 feet is required. Is it? The existing structure is currently built directly on the side property line adjacent to parcel ID number 52742 and is considered legal non-conforming. In order to accommodate for additions to the existing structure along the side property line, the applicant is requesting to waive the side yard setback requirements to zero feet where 20 feet is required. Twenty-one notices were sent to surrounding property owners within 300 feet of the subject property. Seven were received, seven not opposed. Staff believes that adding a wholesale sales operation at this location will add to the economic opportunities in the area and will not adversely affect any adjacent property owners. Staff recommends approval of special use permit application, PLSUP 2015-0000123, filed by Howard Burnett to operate wholesale sales at 329 Westover Drive. Staff also believes that waiving the side yard setback to zero feet will be in keeping with the already existing non-conforming structure. Staff recommends approval of special use permit application, PLSUP 2015-0000124, filed by Howard Burnett to allow a zero-foot side yard setback where 20 feet is required. Staff recommends approval with the following conditions. Condition: The zero-foot setback shall only be located along the west side property line.
All right, I'll open the public hearing now. For those who want to speak on this item, come forth, please.
Well, hello again. Mark Johnson, LE&amp;D Professionals, representing the Daniel Group and Howard Burnett for this request. Scott said we're looking at relocating Southern Refrigeration into what's currently Riverside Equipment Facility and relocating Riverside Equipment to an existing building in the rear of their parking lot. The intent is to add awnings onto this existing building on a currently building that does not meet the current setbacks. The building's been there forever. Our owners have tried to purchase the property that occurs along our side rear setback line to no success. So now we would like to upfit the building, add some awnings, which requires getting the building back into components. The Southern Refrigeration, just given their business, will need to be able to do wholesale as well as retail sales. I mean, they're just a refrigeration parts-type distributor, which is the second or first request. And also, they want the ability down the road, if they want to expand their building, to encroach into the setbacks up there. Currently, the current proposed building does not encroach the setbacks, but they're looking down the road, I guess. Neither uses are significant traffic generator. You know, Riverside Equipment's mainly contractors picking up early in the morning, dropping off in late in the evening, and Southern Refrigeration is mainly to contractors-type sales. So we don't think there should be any issues with the joint access. They'll both use the existing entrance as we move forward to the subdivision process. And we need the special use in order to proceed with that subdivision process.
Okay, any questions from commissioners?
It looks like to me the grading has already been done in anticipation of approval of this?
They've been working on it. Well, they were going to pave that parking lot anyway, you know, just because of the dust control for Southern Refrigeration. So that's probably what you've seen, the work being done out there. That old area was gravel parking lot previously. And in order to control the dust, when the other group moves in, I mean, whether this is approved or not, they were going to ask for the asphalt now.
Any other questions? Okay, all right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Then I'll close the public hearing and look for a motion, please. Right, right. Yeah, we'll need one for the wholesale use first, and then we'll need the second one for the setback. So we're going to have a motion? Go ahead.
You want me to do it? All right, here we go. Recommend approval of special use permit application, PLSUP 2015-0000123, with conditions per staff.
Second.
All right, we'll have a roll call, please.
Mr. Garrison?
Yes.
Mr. Dotson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes. And now we need the approval with the setback line. Okay?
Recommend approval of special use permit application, PLSUP 2015-0000124, with conditions per staff.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
And a roll, please.
Mr. Wilson?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Garrison?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mrs. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Dotson?
Yes.
Okay, next item, rezon application, PLRZ 2015-0000058, filed by Danville Tobacco District LLC requesting to amend the year 2020 land use plan from USR Urban Single Family to CS Community Service and rezon from OTR Old Town Residential to Conditional HRC Highway Retail Commercial District at 425 Hughes Street. The applicant is proposing to rezone to allow for office and commercial use. If we could have a staff report, please.
For questions followed, Danville Tobacco District LLC requesting to amend the year 2020 land use plan from USR Urban Single Family to CS Community Service to rezon from OTR Old Town Residential to Conditional HRC Highway Retail Commercial District, 425 Hughes Street, otherwise known as Grid 1611 Block 9, Parcel 14 of the City of Danville zoning district map. The applicant is proposing to rezone to allow for office and commercial uses. Property's developed with a brick and metal structure with limited paved parking that has been used for various commercial-type operations in the past. The last use was an office and training facility for disabled adults that has been vacant for a number of years. The applicant is proposing to rezone the property to a conditional highway retail commercial category. Conditions proffered are very similar to those of 503 Hughes Street, which was housed the Habitat for Humanity offices in Restor. That property was rezoned to Conditional HRC in 2009. The conditions proffered allow for the office type and some limited commercial uses but eliminate uses that could be most detrimental to the adjacent residential neighborhood. Thirty-four notices were sent to surrounding property owners within 300 feet. Seven responses were received. Five were not opposed. Two were opposed. At the meeting, March 9th, 2015, Planning Commission voted 7-0 to recommend approval of the request with conditions for the applicant and staff. Prior to the April 21st City Council meeting, the applicant requests that this item be referred back to Planning Commission to amend the proffered conditions. The staff recommends approval of the rezoning application filed by Danville Tobacco. Staff recommends approval of the request subject to the proffered list presented by the applicant with staff consultation. The revised list is shown with highlighted additional uses requested by the applicant and adds hour limitations not previously listed.
Okay, open the public hearing now. Anyones who want to come and speak on this one, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm RJ Lackey, I represent Danville Tobacco District. You have in front of you the different proffers, and just wanted to give you a quick and brief explanation of why we did this. There were certain things that when we got in front of council, we're getting ready to get in front of council, realized might be good for the community, the laundromat, for instance. And there's several others, a medical office with, you know, a dock-in-the-box type of thing that the proffers would not have allowed. So we wanted to come back to the Planning Commission, expand, and we've worked with staff for, actually, pretty briefly, and got some that we thought were good. We've limited as much as we can to keep traffic down. For instance, a convenience store, you'll see the hours are limited and there are no gasoline sales. We've tried to keep out as many of what people might consider noxious uses as possible, and we'd ask that you approve it and send it back up to the City Council with your recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from commissioners?
Okay, so the reasoning that it came back to us was because you all wanted to expand the potential usages or clarify or...
To be very clear, when it was originally in front of the Planning Commission, there was proffers to take out uses that are uses by right, and some of those, we didn't feel should be taken out, that they weren't, they were not only not a detriment, but they were actually a positive to that area. So we came back into working with staff to add those back into uses by right.
Can you give an example of some of that?
Yes, sir. Laundromat is one that comes immediately to mind. Medical offices and outpatient care facilities. Again, that's a medically underserved area, and a dock-in-the-box or a general practitioner seemed like a good thing to be able to have. We have no present use for it. Another one that seemed like it ought to be in there was a fitness center, gym-type of, which had originally been limited.
Okay. You'll notice they're highlighted yellow. The only one that's highlighted that shouldn't have been is number 30, which was the exterminator. That should, the highlighting should have been removed from that. I'm sorry, the copy that you have includes that.
But it's being used now, correct?
No, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, it is. There's a church in there at present.
And that will not remain, or will it, or don't know?
Don't really know. There were some people that were looking at it when the church started also looking at it, and so the owner wanted to make sure that they had the right uses.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Close the public hearing and look for a motion, please.
I recommend approval of rezoning application, PLRZ 2015-000058, with conditions per staff.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second, and a roll call, please.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Garrison?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mrs. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Dotson?
Yes.
Okay, next item is approval of the minutes from the April 13th meeting. If there are any changes or corrections on it, if not, can we have a motion that they be approved?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, I'll just do all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, they pass. On other business, I think we have something else?
I do, I do have another item. And I hope I'm wording this correctly. I would like to make a motion. So I move that the Planning Department present to the Planning Commission at our next meeting in June, a proposal that will allow for urban gardens in the Old Town Residential Zones by special use permit only. That's kind of how I word it now, is we can begin the discussion of that.
All right.
And I can explain that, I guess.
Do we actually need to vote on that, or could you just request it? What do you think?
The code states that changes can come through City Council or by recommendation of the Planning Commission. So if Planning Commission recommends that that change be made, there would have to be a vote on it because it has to be the actual Planning Commission, not just one member. But yes, that's how the process will work.
Okay.
If we could, there are also other changes that we would like to see. So if it's all right, if you could just broaden it slightly to say, you know, those changes that you've recommended in, some additional by staff, we've got some definitions that we think we need to look at as well. It will save us some money if we advertise everything as one big change as opposed to each individual change. So if Planning Commission's all right with that, you just recommend staff look at making some modifications to that portion of the zoning code as well as some others, that would be fine with us.
I'll offer that, you know, mine plus whatever you all think we need to add to it as so we can consider this as a possibility. And I guess we need to have a second or something, so...
Got that.
So I'd like to just explain, is it okay for me to explain where this is coming from? There is a group, a faith community group that receives some property in the North Main area that they would like to develop into an urban garden. And right now, that is really not allowed, if I understand, under the Old Town Residential thing. So in order to allow something like this to happen, I'm going to kind of encourage us to take a look at that, and if we can make that happen. But I am personally want to make sure it's a special use permit kind of situation, so it's not just universal, it comes every time. So that's what's behind the idea here.
Okay, all right, we have a motion and a second. You want to call the roll?
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Garrison?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mrs. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Dotson?
Yes.
Okay, any other business from the staff?
We do have cases for next month filed, so we will have a meeting. I usually have the council report from what happened at the April meeting, but as you saw, the one case was withdrawn and brought back to you, so I don't have a report on that. We have the changes to the comprehensive plan that hopefully I will have back to you next month if I can get those finished in time. And that's all staff has at the moment.
Okay, anything else? Okay, meeting stands adjourned.